Town Council Public Hearing, County Public Louisiana Parish of East Fencham, State of Louisiana. 11209 Main Street, Tuesday, December 12, 2017, at 5:30 PM. We will call and pray our bye. Mayor Lorian Bill, the President of the Louisiana Public Health and Public Safety. Let us stand our heads. Father God, we come today to say thank you. Well, we thank you for this assembly. Lord, let us come together and put our heads together and do what is in the best interest of this town and the citizens of this town. Father, we ask that you continue to bless us and to keep us. And Father, as we go on our separate ways when we leave this meeting, I ask that you go before us. I bow to accidents, I bow to reckless drivers. And Lord, just continue to build this town and let us grow to be the rare town that we should be. These blessings, Lord, rise in Jesus' name, amen.
Our prayers are to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with infinite justice for all.
We will call, um, the county's chief John. With the record reflected, he's not here right now. Ms. Mary Donaway here. Mr. Pitt here. Mr. Matthews here. Ms. Young here. Police Chief, he's not here yet. Uh, Police Chief Douglas Beachum, he's not coming, he called me through. Town Attorney.
Up here.
And Town Attorney. With the record reflected, uh, Mr. Bridge was not here yet. Go ahead and discuss the, uh, 2018 proposed budget. Okay, what we have announced, the public hearing on the proposed budget. So at this time, I will entertain any questions from... Tim, you want to explain it personally or you want to go first?
Yeah, I can just give you a brief overview.
I'm sorry.
What we did on the, on the budget, it was after discussions, there's nothing added to the budget for fiscal year 2018. No plans of capital, any capital expenditures. Uh, we used 2017's actual expenses to come up with the budget for 2018. Basically, what we've done for the last two years, it's, it's come out pretty close. The only thing that we took, uh, we should, uh, Chief was here. He's going to run a couple of, uh, advocacy programs. So we, we, that's the only thing that we figured in to the budget other than, than the normal business of last year. But other than that, the, the actual expenses you see here is actually what occurred in 17. Maybe we were just going to leave them. There, there's nothing, no, no changes to that.
Okay, I have a question. Uh, as to the $9,000 for litter cleanup? How much of that do they, is that like part of, is that salary hours broken down into how many hours are spent on litter cleanup? Or how do you get that sort of figure?
Uh, do you know, Penny, do you care about that?
The litter pickup, that's part of, uh, there's sometime their salaries. It goes out in sometime, uh, like, uh...
Like $9,000 would be equivalent to X amount of hours in the year spent on litter cleanup?
Sometimes more.
Eight hours or eight hours? Litter cleanup, it, I mean, you know, the really large beard cans and such, and they're everywhere. It's just, I do see the small sign. I've seen one, I don't know how many there are, but there, there's a sign that says, if you see someone littering, call this number.
And let me just say, if you see someone littering and you call that number and you actually see them, they get citations.
That's what I asked, I just saw the sign.
I've, I've, I've had someone just throw trash out right over the street from me and I'm looking at it. And he finally said, oh, that's the man. Yeah, we, we actually, yeah, that works, babe.
Good. Well, certainly like to see them concentrate as whatever projects they're doing. You know, even if you happen to be working on a water line or what have you, if there's trash in the area, could you just please pick it up?
Father, what I'm going to do, and I know this is kind of off the line, but I'll, I'm going to do, uh, some things that we're going to do as far as the town in general, kind of bring it up on the cloud, kind of come up here, you know, some projects that you're playing. Uh, uh, what feel are you all in on about that? Yeah.
Also, if they confiscate a car or find the exact amount of that drug dealer's car, they can go to the special car.
Special Court Correspondents, specifically a collection that allows the $15 or whatever it is to be added to, uh, court costs dedicated to the police departments, marshals offices, sheriff's offices.
Public defenders. Uh, well, this is no chief, that's mayor's court.
I help write the legislation.
Yeah, this mayor's court, regardless of, yeah, it's mayor's court.
That's how I expect.
Any, any, any other questions, anything from the, uh, public? What, I'm sorry, wait, wait up. I guess we can, uh, actually entertain a motion to close up, uh, to close up the, uh, public hearing as far as the proposed budget.
I'm hoping that, uh, reading of the proposed budget, uh, public hearing will be closed down.
It has been motion by Alderman Kim Young that we close the, uh, needed, uh, public hearing for the proposed 2018 budget. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
It's been second by Alderman Mark Kim. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Uh, so the motion is carried. Yes, sir, you guys, are you ready to vote? Okay, roll on into our regular meeting, town meeting. And we've done all the collateral orders. I'm going to call, uh, Councilor Alderman Beachum.
Here.
Alderman Donaway here. Alderman Kim.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderman Young.
Here.
Police Chief Dunn here. Police Chief Douglas Beachum. Town Attorney, Father.
Tim.
Town Attorney, Mr. Rip.
Here.
Uh, we now go into our regular, uh, town council session. Okay, uh, the first item on the agenda, uh, we have the public hearing as in regards to, uh, discussion of the 2018 proposed budget. At this time, if there's not any other discussion, I would entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the 2018 proposed budget.
I have a second.
It has been motion by Alderman Mark Kim to adopt the 2018 proposed budget. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
It has been second by Alderman Kim Young. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
Alderman Phil by saying aye. Any opposition? I have the motion is carried, thank you. Okay. Are there any changes additions to the agenda? Okay, well, at this time, I will entertain a motion by disposition of the minutes of our previous meeting, dated November 14, 2017. Keep that motion to the seven minutes. It has been motion by Alderman Mary Donaway. Do I have a second? Okay. It has been second by Alderman Kim Young that we, uh, do, uh, dispose the minutes of our previous meeting. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? I have the motions carried. Uh, Mr. Park, you can contest at this time.
Does anybody have any questions about the Patrick's mitigation plan or something of that's been?
Well, we just got it tonight, we haven't had a chance to read it.
Has the mitigation plan been approved by the parish and it's been reviewed by a steering committee? And it's been approved? And, uh, what this will do is get the parish money for mitigation projects. Each, uh, municipality in the parish has to approve it for theirs in case there's any mitigation plans for them. Otherwise, there won't be no funds for mitigation projects. What we need each town to do is approve the mitigation plan and develop, uh, create a resolution saying you adopted that plan. I submitted a draft resolution for you guys to review. You can use that or develop your own. That's from our Homeland Security Department's office.
Is it imminent that we say yes to this today? Can we tangle this until we've had time to renumber it and we can do it?
Certainly, yes, I think it is.
And we, we were told it had to be done by December 31st. We have to have it into the governor's office, Homeland Security for them to review.
They're waiting.
They have a certain time limit.
And can we take it on and read it and then argue?
Yeah, y'all can call in if y'all however y'all want to do it.
Because we just got it tonight.
As just as long as we have it, give us, get it to us by the 20th so we can put everything together. And we're going to have it to Homeland, to go set by the end of the month. And they have to have it to the governor's office and then to the table by a certain time.
This is what all the municipalities in the parish are doing?
Yes.
Yes.
Jackson approved theirs last night. I'm going to Wilson tomorrow night and then all of it.
Are they all the same or?
Everybody's the same. Everybody's identical. Jody is at Slawer's meeting tonight, so. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, this will help us during flood times or any help?
It's not money is to, to stop or help in flood time. It's money is for mitigation projects, things you need to do to mitigate things so they won't happen again. It's up to you, it's public assistance type stuff.
We definitely need it. Especially in terms of creek.
I see that they have a particular flood time to deal with.
Mitigation just means that you're doing, putting something in place that that won't happen again, you know?
Yes, I agree with that.
So they're going to look forward to it now.
Okay.
More than I do, y'all get back to me by Friday maybe.
Call me Monday.
Is it count by Friday or by Monday?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You can call Monday and then why don't y'all go ahead and make a resolution, submit to the approval by the board. Yeah, you need that resolution, so.
You need to go ahead and put that on your bench.
If you want to follow that one that I sent to y'all, it's a rough draft, put your...
That's what she wrote.
...town planning on the top.
That's what she wrote, yes, sir. I'll get it to you later.
Okay.
We need to make a motion.
What we need to do?
Yeah, y'all need to make a motion to approve the resolution to have it in minutes. It's up to y'all's review of it.
Okay, okay.
I have a second.
So Alderman Kim, do I have a second?
Absolutely.
Second, Alderman John Beachon. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? I have the motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you, y'all appreciate it, okay. I'll have a good evening.
You too, sir. Sign my name. Mr. Matt, it's your turn.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Financial statement for 2016. Um, I think I know everybody on the council. Everybody knows me, that could be good or bad, I guess, but mistakes, I think it's good because we have, you know, a good set of financials. Um, everybody get a copy of all it?
Just got it tonight.
I'm sorry?
Just got it tonight.
Okay, all right, well, uh, later on, if you have questions, you can stop by, give me a call or whatnot. I apologize, I've been fighting this cold stuff since last Thursday or whatever and it was like that. I don't want to see any more snow for at least 10 years myself.
You stay over there, go talk.
Well, that's why I say in the heat, finally got, I finally got my heat back this morning, so that was out since Thursday too at the office. Been kind of a challenge. Anyway, the audit package you see here is similar to what you've seen in the past. Uh, a lot of these schedules and the format of presentation is dictated by the government Audit Standards, Audit Standards Board. And, uh, Louisiana Legislative Auditor, they have a lot to say about the way we present these things. And they're, they're getting more and more particular about what they want us to address in these audit reports. So, uh, like I say, what you're looking at, there's maybe a few changes over the last couple of years, but most of, as a lot of us, the same. Draw your attention to pages one and two. Uh, this is what we call the audit opinion, or it's entitled Independent Audit Report. Okay. Uh, and a lot of that standard language in there that we have to use. Uh, if you look over on page two, um... Bottom of page one, the last sentence in page two, it says, "We believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient appropriate to be our basis for our audit opinions." And then on top of page two, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." Well, anyway, that's what's known as a clean opinion or unqualified opinion, and that's what you want. In other words, that it's not subject to or any other type of language that we don't like to have to put in there unless it's absolutely necessary. So that's good news. It's always good, that's what you want. Um, the rest of it's just standard information that addresses the different parcels and parts of the, uh, of the audit report itself. If you continue on, uh, page three, which is required, it's all the running information, part one of two. This is known as M D N A of the town's management's discussion and analysis. Um, it kind of hits some of the high points of, uh, you know, like I hear on their accomplishments over the past year overall, but across all funds, the town increased its net position by 201,627. And, uh, a lot of that was due to grants and whatnot, but it's good to have an increase there. So your net position, uh, it's kind of like your net worth is, uh, you know, increased. That's always good. Um, a lot of it's, uh, like I say, it's information about, uh, the financial statements themselves and some of the more of the accomplishments and whatnot. Um, just kind of flip through it, you'll see a schedule starting on page six. It's a summary of the net positions and it kind of gives you a little bit different look at the, uh, assets, liabilities of the town. Of course, it's all in summarized form. Then it's a comparison 2015 to 2016 here, that give you a point of reference. Next page, uh, the first page, it's always governmental activities, which, you know, include, uh, the, uh, the general fund and the, uh, streets and sidewalks. And the business type activities, of course, that's your utility, okay? That's on the next page and that kind of gives you overview of the, you know, summary of the financial position. Um, and then we've got, uh, page eight, that looks something like, uh, what we call the income statement in the private sector. Summary of changes in net position, governmental activities, and the next page is the business activities. Okay, it gives you, yes, okay.
Good question.
Yeah.
Interest on long-term debt. What debt?
Um, interest, let's see which page you're looking at.
Page.
Let's see what, uh... The debt, uh, let's see, I'm going to flip back myself. Um, the long-term liabilities, and we've got more information, maybe we can answer your question further back in the notes or whatnot. I think that's, uh, you may have to help me here a little bit, Angie. That, uh... Bonds.
One page on that.
Yeah.
Debt, liabilities, bonds.
There you go, thank, thank you. Thank you, Charles. The bonds, uh, and that's accrued, uh, and that represents the interest as well, maybe not necessarily paid, but accrued or due in a way, you know, for that time period. I knew it was something to do with bonds, but I couldn't have refreshed my memory. In other words, there's no loans at banks and things like that, you know, which, of course, you would have to go before the bonding commission to get approval before you carry any account of debt like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, all right, um, let's see. Uh, schedules of capital assets and whatnot on pages, uh, um, 10. At the bottom of 10, there's some, uh, uh, there were a lot, you know, where some improvements made as far as overlays and streets and whatnot. And you see the top summarized here. The, uh, the sewer rehab project, uh, I guess that was the lift stations and whatnot that were completed, you know, things like that. So there was, you know, there were, in spite of the flood and everything else that happened, there were improvements that happened too. You know, it's, uh, it's tough for any smaller government, well, any size government nowadays, it's, uh, there's only so much, uh, available in the form of inflows and whatnot. So you have to try to manage it as best you can, try to keep the streets where they're passable and, you know, be able to provide water and sewer and all that. It's all on a limited budget always. And the state grants are not what they used to be, the money's not available like it used to be, you know, so we're like in different worlds, just a challenge, uh, to most, especially in smaller towns and villages and whatnot. Uh, okay, let's see. Moving on, the next section is the government-wide financial statements. This is tips to look at the, the town government as a whole, across all the funds, you know, general fund, uh, streets and sidewalk, utility funds. And which, uh, general fund, you know, includes the, uh, public safety, you know, police department, whatnot. Um, statement of net position on page 13. All right, in the private sector, that would be known as a balance sheet. Shows your assets at the top, you know, things you own, uh, liabilities in the middle of the page. And then, uh, on the next page, 14, the net position, which is the balancing figure. The difference between the assets and liabilities, you know, are equal to net position. The next page is kind of like, it's a summary through the income statement, we're for the statement of activities on page 15. And, uh, like I say, again, this, this form of presentation, it's a little bit tough to read sometimes, you may have to study it and whatnot. But you can go through and, and see, you know, the income, expenses and whatnot. And, uh, the net over there on the right, on the left side of the page. And, uh, uh, again, this is like government-wide, so it's, it's trying to summarize the whole, I guess, the, uh, financial condition and operations of the town as a whole. My voice may give out a pile of doubt again. The, uh, when you go to page 17, that's when you get into the, uh, the fund financial statements. And, uh, again, we have like a, you know, this is a balance sheet for the governmental funds. And, uh, it's a different accounting basis is what we're looking at the government-wide. Which is why, if you look at the balance sheet on pages 17 and 18, there's reconciliation on page 19. That, uh, it ties these fund financial statements into the government-wide financial statement and shows the differences and whatnot. Uh, you know, a big effect that they've had the last couple of years, if they implemented what's known as G A S B or Governmental Accounting Standards Board Number 68. And what they're trying to do is approximate the liability for future pension liabilities and whatnot. And, uh, it's based on a lot of estimates and whatnot, but it's required presentation. You know, we have to present this information now. It's, uh, they're trying to give assurance to government employees across the board, all the way to the federal level, that, you know, they'll have pensions, you know, uh, income in the future when they retire. It's trying to give assurances is what they're trying to do, but it's, uh, there's several pages that were in the notes that, uh, deal with the way this, these figures are, uh, determined. But again, it's all based on predicted, uh, how long is somebody going to live after retiring, you know, and all that, so it's actuarial accounting, they call it. Anyway, it's got a pretty good size, you know, as far as the fund balance goes, it has a substantial effect on it. Uh, let's see, let's see page. Statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance, it's like an income statement for governmental funds on pages 20 and 21. And if you flip over to page 23, uh, the proprietary funds, okay, that's an enterprise fund. It's, uh, basically what it's dealing with is utilities. And they have to be accounted for separately, presented separately with information on it. And that's your balance sheet there. And then, uh, also, it's continued on page 24. The comparative statements of revenue, expenses, and changes in fund net position for proprietary, I'm sorry, proprietary funds on page 25. Gives you an idea, of course, I know that at least for sure in 2016 and even in 2015, uh, you had fairly, or most days in the winter were warm, so you didn't have gas sales you normally would have. That's always been, uh, you know, a drawdown on the bottom line and whatnot. And, uh, I mean, the way it's been going here since last week, I think maybe it won't be a problem here for 17, 18, like, because I know I've, uh, it's been cold. But that's a good thing for the town, I know it works. Uh, flipping on. There's a note, the financial statement, there's a summary on page 29. And you read through and it, uh, it explains, it tries to give more information, let's notice about the figures that you found in the financial statements that we just took a look at. And you can kind of read through that and, uh, see if you have any questions. Again, you can, uh, you can give me a call or come by and we can, uh, address any concerns or questions you may have. Let's see. There's quite a bit, quite a bit of information to take in all at once, uh, as I say, you may want to just read over it and ask how likes and whatnot, any questions you may have. Okay, um, well, my voice is still working here. Um, let's go back towards the back of the report. And the supplemental information. The prior year, you had, uh, when you have expenditures at federal awards, it used to be $500,000, but now it's up to $750,000. If you had more than, or $750,000 or more in federal awards, you know, for the year, then you have to do what's known as a single audit. And it requires more audit steps and, uh, more detail as far as the procedures and all that have to be performed during the audit. And that's to give assurance of the federal government, uh, some years back, they mandated that, uh, additional audit steps be added to, uh, ensure that the federal money's being used for the purpose in which it was awarded. So, uh, you fell short this year, so, uh, you know, determined that it was only 487,000, so it fell below the threshold for that. Let's see. Let's see. There's another audit report that talks about uh, internal control and compliance and. You know, things of that nature, and it's talking about being in compliance and, you know, with grant agreements and whatnot, and. Uh, other regulations and all the towns required to follow, and again, that had a uh. There was no uh, exception there, but we did have some findings further back, um. The uh. On page fifty-nine, there's a finding compliance of audit law, and that's because the uh. Audit was turned in after June thirtieth, you know, which is the due date for the audit, under normal circumstances. Of course, there were a lot of knocked over effects of the flood and whatnot, uh. That uh, prevented the audit from being, you know, the figures from being uh. You know, uh, adjusted whatnot, in time, time that audit in by June thirtieth, so. Uh, anyway, that's only a temporary condition, cause hopefully, now, you'll be able to uh. You know, hopefully, there's no more disasters or floods or whatnot that's gonna cause. You know, conditions to just put extra workload on the town set. Anyway, um. The uh, the great flood of twenty sixteen, that's what we put in there for us, so. So far, I don't think the town's had any kind of inquiry about that, have you? There's been nothing legislative audit or anything, okay, that's a good thing. Um, the other thing was the finding number two. The uh, apparently, when you passed the budget for twenty sixteen, it was never amended. So you ended up with variances that were uh, let's see. Look back in the budget comparison schedule. Pages in the forties. Page forty-seven. Yeah, forty, beginning of page forty-seven. Um, what I recommend that you do for this is to, you know, we're down into uh, December now, but. Um, just go ahead and take a look at the twenty seventeen budget that you have, and go ahead and do an amendment. You know, as soon as you can. Go ahead and amend the budget, because I mean, a budget, all it is, is an estimate or a projection, in which you think that, you know, conditions are gonna be. And of course, they, you know, I, I don't know if too many municipalities that come right in on budget or within the five percent variance allow. Um, there's a three percent and a five percent variance, you know, so that's kinda high when you're looking at. How much you can have on your budget, you know, like you just uh. We're talking about the eighteen budget, I guess, a few minutes ago. And seventeen budget, you need to look at that, you know, and go ahead and see if you don't have the same, you know. You know, we get with uh, get Angie and get with uh, Tim and, and take a look at doing that. But anyway, uh. That's pretty much it, the only other thing we had was the management letter, and uh, it was issued, I don't know, it's on the back of the report and lot, but. Yeah, from the very, very back of my copy right here. Uh, and a lot of this, like I say, these uh, delay and uh, reconciled bank statements and things like that, I think a lot of. This was due to uh, complications surrounding the flood and whatnot, but it's one to bring it to management's attention. And one of the recommendations that would make is to help strengthen the internal control, is to. Let uh, you know, let you outside of Canada, Tim, and then maybe reconcile the bank statements, or at least the general fund, or. It just helps strengthen internal control, because if, the uh, let's leave the auditor there, you know, they have a new uh. They have a whole new set of procedures that have to be performed now, they call them statewide breach of procedures, and they're effective for. Anybody with a year-end, uh, June thirtieth of twenty seventeen and later. And it's a document that's probably seven or eight pages long, of audit steps that they want all auditors to perform on, all audits in the state. You know, this, it's a whole new deal that uh, they just. I guess they decided they wanted to see certain audit steps done that are not optional anymore than maybe used to be optional, and whatnot, so. Just keep that in the back of your mind. I mean, this is kind of a brief overview, y'all have any questions on what we?
I think we should go to page forty-four.
Forty-four.
This is dealing with property tax. Forty-four.
Okay.
Now, the way I'm reading this, it's under, um, it says the town receives its property taxes through. He's pushing out parish colonies, true, which is true. Who is responsible for collections, the town collects their own money.
Um.
Unless you mean something else.
Yeah, the uh. For the parish, you know, the sheriff is the tax collector. You know, I, I think that the ultimate, uh, if a town or one of the villages in the parish. You know, has any problems collecting, I believe there's some provision where the police jury can step in and help to uh. Assist or whatnot, or.
I don't know. I pointed this out before, before you ever did anything, and uh, but to me, the statement is misleading.
Yeah. Alright, well, I can, I can get back with you on that, I can get something more definitive for you on that.
Because, uh, I mean, I know the town collects its own, and sheriff's office collects by the.
For the police jury, you know, but they're like an agent for the police jury, but, uh.
Because uh.
That's a good point, girl.
With uh, past due property tax and weaponry, pre-odd your own, trying to collect.
Okay, that, that's a good point. That's a good point.
Has this been filed yet with the state? The audit?
Um, well, I'm sorry.
Has it been filed, yes?
Yeah. Yeah, it had to be.
So right now, we're?
Yeah, you didn't, yeah, you're on the compliance li, you're on the compliance list, so.
Okay.
You're on the non-compliance list, so.
Yeah, I need that.
But uh. The uh, now, of course, the sales tax comes through the parish and then back to the town, you know. Think about that, but the property tax is different following.
Yeah.
But anyway, read through it, if anything else like that you noticed, so if you bring my attention. Is there any other questions on anything here? I mean, you know, it's uh, the town, under the conditions, you know, you have it operate in, you know, just. Click it right along, so. You know, but uh, that's about it, that's all I had, you know, like I say, if you have any more questions, just stop by or. Get it over with. Just give me a call. Alright?
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome, thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Now, okay, the next item on the agenda, uh, appointments to the zoning commission. This had to run to my attention that uh, there were how many, five, all of one person on the zoning commission, if that term expires, uh. December thirty-first. This year, in December. That's five, that, that term expires. Uh, Mr. Blackledge is on one, the term does not expire, so, uh. We've actually phoned some people, but we're still short, right?
Yes, ma'am, I haven't heard that from, uh, two of the ladies, uh. Miss uh, Joy Gardner and Miss Patricia Molar. I haven't heard anything that, oh yeah.
Ask the ones who, if they want.
Dude, that got her front.
We have heard from Mr. Bartlett, we have heard from, uh, Willie Shoemaker, John Sanders. And uh, uh, Willie Shoemaker, Jimmy and John Sanders, we're having John Sanders.
They agree to serve?
They agree. But uh.
I just need two more?
I need two more, and if you have a name, just call Miss Angie, in case Miss Pat or Miss Joy cannot serve. Before the third first.
This is.
It's on, it's on the board, so their position will go in January, or December first. Joy Gardner. Maybe on the bottom, I thought of hers.
Bobby Wilson?
Bobby Slater.
Bobby Slater, oh, okay, she would have called my expert.
What, that, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, Pat Maria, she works for her own work. She lives in, worst apartments.
Okay, so we're gonna get that. Okay. Okay.
Yes, unless you hear from them not, you know.
Okay, well, I'll have to turn the motion to reappoint those, um, fine positions to the zoning commission, provide that Miss Molar and Miss Gardner.
Um, could he access, uh, cause, uh, like Carol Kim and Carolyn Licker, they didn't want to serve anymore?
They returned, returned in forty years.
So they had to stay out of here and then, go ahead and.
And Pat and Joy are already on it?
No, we don't.
Well, he's gonna ask if they're exiting, if they'll serve.
So that's in the ballot, is that they can only have four-year terms?
I think so.
That must be what works still on it.
No, he just, he just had it because he just. Um, she works for the, uh, 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 ten success, she was on it, but she.
Oh, yeah, Jared.
So you have to live in the city unless.
Man, we could go to the Hursens.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, I understand the motion to make those appointments to the zoning commission.
I'm motioning that we make the, uh, that we, we're ready to do that, that zoning.
It has been motion by Alden Kim Young, that, you know, we do the appointments to the zoning commission, do I have a second?
I have a second.
It has been second by Alden Ward Kim, are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor of saying aye, in your position? I say the motion is carried, Chief Dogwood, here for you now.
This man, Madam Mayor, voted Alden Ward Kim, for the police department, for the month ago, we had a hundred and two citations. Our active warrants is a thousand and fifty, we're down fifty-seven from last month, so we have eleven, hundred and seven. Uh, the fine for a mobile grant, that's the total grant, will be twenty-nine hundred. The town, the our police department will be responsible for nine hundred ninety-five, the grant award will be two thousand. From the most forensic grant, what that allows to do is. Upgrade our mobile equipment, you see this yellow machine sitting out back. It's a head that we have to replace on, and this grant will allow us to do it, if not, it will cost us around thirty-two hundred to replace it ourselves. So we get this grant that allows us to be able to tap into cell phones, to be able to break codes and stuff, and this is exactly, this is legal because. The state approved. Uh, that grant, like I said, is twenty-nine ninety-five, and we, the grant will award two thousand, and the town has. Police department has to pay nine hundred ninety-five, which will come from special court costs. I have three cases that's going to the grand jury, and the reason it's taking some time to get to them, there's juveniles involved. And when juveniles involved, it's stuff that you cannot exactly discuss in the public because it's juvenile, uh. And one of those cases is done way here well, but the other two were just brought out of attention, and. For some reason, the DA doesn't wanna convene the grand jury for one case. He said, the more is the merit, so, the town have three, and I think the sheriff department have some coming up.
So what that means to me is I, I keep waiting till there's more?
No, I, we have three, he gonna, he gonna convene, he say he gonna, the first one he gonna have will be in February. That's the, uh, earliest he gonna have, it all, I tried to get it in in January, but, of course, not to run up the sort of subject, you know, that. The sheriff could have played guilty to two and not guilt on the other two, so. That's what threw it out for January, so he, February is the door, them three gonna be there, uh. Information on the charger and the fire trucks, I got with Miss Angie. Talk to the justice other piece, talk to headquarters, this is what we can do with the fire trucks, uh. I got it approved, where we have to do a physical inspection, which is myself and Captain Davis is licensed to do that. We do a physical inspection, the JP, which is Mr. Yarborough, do a JP court order. Take it to the DMV, you get titles for those two trucks in a matter of a week's time, because they couldn't even build a record on them. The charger sitting out back, in two thousand and twelve, it was wrecked by. Mike Jones on the phone administration, and then, and anytime you have a wreck vehicle now, and you repair it, you have to get a. A reconstructure title. And the process of selling that charger, that's what we ran into. So, we did a physical inspection on them, actually, we had to get Jimmy Harden with the sheriff department to do it, because. It'd be a conflict of interest if we had a captain did it for the town. We're not trying to get into any kind of trouble, so, we have Mr. Harden to do it, soon we get the title back, that unit will be sold, for.
That's the unit that we had two offers on, one with four thousand, one with thirty-seven.
And you think you might get the title on that?
It, in only, in uh, three to seven days, they come back.
Now, chopping back, what about the fire trucks, when might that be done?
I, we just did the physical inspection on them, we just waiting on, uh, Mr. Yarborough and JP to come back to do the paperwork, go to the rise, and take it to the DMV.
And also. And also, I talked to Miss Judy Kelly, she was with the fire district, uh. She said that she would go back and look at her records to see if they had the titles, but she said normally, when it's paid off, it comes to the municipality.
And it was, if it was never registered, it won't come to us.
But what we did, but what we did find out is. What we did find out, the town, they actually owned one of those trucks because they bought it. And the second one, which, I don't know which year, what model year it was, the uh, the second one was got off a donation through the fire department.
I thought you had said, last month, that none of the paperwork was ever done.
All, all we ever had was insurance card, and a B and I'm on, that was it.
Well, yeah, and I mean that you have to show a title to the insurance company, you're calling, telling what you wanna insure. By the way, it's probably within a month, we might have the titles.
Yes, sir, uh, I said before, before this month is out, you should have a title to them, because, like I said, we need the physical inspection. And Mr. Yarborough come up and actually signed the court order, which he can do it, it goes straight to the DMV.
Okay, one more question, we were talking about the shallow piece of equipment.
Yes, sir.
I thought that had something to do with the cameras around town?
Yes, sir, it does, he got a mobile head, but it does. It allows us to pull it up, actually let that equipment belong to homeland security. And uh, they donated it to the town, because they didn't wanna buy a head on it, and. We can use it with the laptops, but it only go to a certain extent, if you wanna go tap into that new tower, they just put a rally bill. We have to get the T, and it's roughly around three thousand. And with this mobile forensic grant, it only costs the police department nine hundred ninety-five.
Do we have clear title to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's all, that's all I have.
So you've applied for that grant? We're waiting for approval?
Yes, ma'am, I'm applying for it, and uh, I already did the, the legal, legal, initial paperwork. And we definitely gonna have to come back in, there'll be a war in January.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the maintenance department, that's recording the packet, Mr. Beecham's not here, and uh, Mr. Beecham told me to tell, uh. That they didn't have any type of, uh, fires, anything, and that they did participate in that Christmas parade. They were stood at two. Listen, but I think you, you need to report.
Yeah, unless he might have a question.
I'm sorry, I want you to talk, alright, huh? Okay, any old business.
I got something.
Come on.
Okay, um. Do we have a status on the meeting with Bill Nedley, with the Corvage here?
No, we don't have a status on what it is, uh, what he said was that, during. No, we don't have a status on it. What it is, uh, what he said was that during the time that, you know, this second club came about, uh, it's like, uh, eighteen, not a, I don't wanna say waiting weeks, but, uh, Mr. Hicks and I was just talking. Is Ruston or he gone?
I think he's gone.
Okay, we were just talking, uh, we're going to, uh, January, because right now it's like, you know, it's holidays and nothing. We're gonna form a committee. And, uh, we're gonna go from there, and hopefully the Corps can actually come in and find us someone to list to come in and give us some help. We're gonna have to have, uh, what's we saying, some, uh, right away, uh, some properties down there. About pretty quick, but you don't think that's gonna really solve what's going on with the flooding? But anyway, that's what we're gonna do from January. Work with that.
Okay. What about, um, Chad with, uh, Coburn?
He called. Yes, he called, and he's working up a proposal, uh, just for the town Clinton, uh. He's not finished with it, but he should be finished by January. Have we hit up the January meeting? Right, Miss Angie, we need to talk to the board members in January.
Good.
Okay.
And, uh. Civic source. Uh, I'm saying, that's the next one we got, civic source?
I got two more.
Okay, go.
What about the monies from FEMA? Have we collected all the monies?
Not all of it. How much we collected?
A hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
That we've gotten?
Of one eighty-nine, of one eighty-nine.
But I did get a call from Ms. Williams, and there's a non-federal share match that's, uh, actually, uh, we should very get that ten percent. It was ninety-ten and something. We're gonna fill that out, and, uh, the deadline is December fifteenth, and we should get reimbursed a hundred percent. Plus the other monies that they didn't send us the first one.
Last thing. We really need to be adamant about patching these streets.
I know.
We're getting, well, I mean, the holes are getting deeper. And I know the hole patch shouldn't stay long, but if that's the best we can do, then we need to do it. Because I was writing down, well, Taylor Street's bad, Old South Drive, no, no, Oak Street's bad, Si-, uh, Bank Street.
Church Street.
Bayou Street is bad.
Nelson Street.
Yeah, but, um, if they could just, you know, go week, we can patch them up.
We'll do that.
Because it's hard, um, I mean, it's aggravating when you, you jump up anyone.
The next one.
Yes, there's, there's.
I got, uh, the end of Southern Street and, uh, Oak Street up there. There's a hole coming around it. I'm talking a hole. I mean, nobody put nothing up or anything.
Okay, this is where it's been overlaid.
It's, yeah, it's right at the end of it, but I think, I, I think it's a cove that's supposed to go across where that fire hydrant is. Cat corner across there. There's, I, I didn't stop to look at it, but but it's, it's, he needs to go over there more and take care of that.
It's two, it's two sink-ins.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
And see what it is, though, what we gotta do is take that and everything deep. Making another, the ditch is full of water coming behind the, uh, school board there, maiden's place. I mean, I don't know. It's a leak somewhere. Because we're running that in front of Sonny Franklin's house. That ditch is full of water right now.
What about the fire hydrants that's supposed to be replaced that haven't?
Saying we have a status on that. I don't, I know that, uh, the fire hydrant that's up town, let's call me, uh, today. They're gonna actually do that one. That's with the street project. We're not gonna, uh, have to install that one.
Where's that? None of them across from the lures?
No, the one right there by the, uh, by the purple cord, by the bay.
Oh, okay.
The one right there. They're gonna actually go ahead and do that, uh, not expense of the town. We just have to be there to make sure that they're.
We're just gonna do it all on the, up, up.
About the, about the lures. He, he didn't talk to him about that one, but I'll talk to him.
Well, up there on Old South Drive that we talked about months ago, it's a continuous leak.
I saw it.
It's not a drill, but it's a leak.
Old South Drive.
And I want those, it's not that big.
It's a little skinned one. It's a little skinned.
Yeah, it's a little skinned one.
Also, Miss Bobby said there's one by the Bovers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a bad one.
I'm guessing, uh, it's a, they could take.
Remember, since y'all was scared of the sound of Bogan? About the old marshals.
The last time we asked, they said that they were gonna be getting some new fire hydrants. And you ask somebody, well, we got them, but we hadn't had a chance to, which I can understand. But it just needs attentive.
You're right. Needs to be attentive.
Because this has been going on since maybe August.
I have one more thing from the old business. Last month, it was reported that Bailey Cable paid all of twenty-sixteen and three-quarters of twenty-seventeen in their taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Finished up twenty-seventeen, it's not due until January twenty-first.
How long have you been doing with the collections on property tax?
Well, they come in, they do a good.
What about past due utilities?
Past due utilities, um.
Any luck?
I think the sheriff had sent out a couple of letters, and we have, I think they had it to the, is it the end of this month now?
December, yeah. And I talked to, I talked to, to have all of them.
Then what happens in January, the thirtieth, first, and they hadn't been able to, because I know some of them.
Some of them are not able to.
Were allowed to get deeply in debt.
Yeah.
Because the people that talked to me, and I said, well, two things were a problem. First, you didn't pay, and then second, the town allows you to get deeply in debt to where it's really gonna be hard to pay. But, um, I mean, AT&amp;T and Horizon and all of that, they don't pay. If you don't pay, you don't come. Could you want to think?
I say that.
But, uh, and I know it's tough on people, but business is business.
We got one coming.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the Bailey's cable, who we brought up a couple of months ago, the DirecTV and Dish. Like, I looked at my Dish bill the other day, and they collect taxes. Does the parish collect those taxes? Or does somebody collect those taxes, and we just don't? They're not, we're not getting, uh, just a bit of them, or is that not?
You got to talk to the school for that, I guess.
Because they're local, you know? If you look at your bill, it's got local taxes. Now, whether the local taxes are, I don't know.
Yeah, if I'm competing too. Now, I don't think she charges a tax. That's a good way to show.
Thinking about money.
So how do we find out if we're gonna do that? Who talks to the school about that?
I don't know who the contact would be. I don't know if that would be.
Because maybe Mrs. Alexander? Uh, I called for something to do with sales tax, and they told me that's who I need to talk to. That's the only reason I'm here.
See, you know this? You know, old business? Public comment. Any public comment?
I have some public comments. Well, I had some folks send me some information. I was out of town for the Christmas parade. And I had some folks who sent me messages and called and asked questions about, um, they weren't very happy about toilet paper being thrown in the parade. Well, I'm just, so I'm asking, where, where did we get it? Is that toilet paper that was supposed, that was donated to the town for us to use for disasters like floods or whatever, to help people, or was donated during the two thousand sixteen flood? Eighteen from the truckload of oil. I would say probably. Tell them, make them probably talk to all five guys, but that's all I can say. Zachary does it all the time. It's not a big issue. That's just me. They've been doing it. It's not a big issue.
Was it, was it on Rose?
No, it was the whole thing. It was the whole thing.
Why was anybody getting mail about that?
About the toilet tissue.
Is it, well, they just thought it was a rather, if you're trying to make your parade look nice, then you're accustomed to people throwing, I guess, candy and beans and what have you, and that maybe it also looks like.
That's why I just said, come out of your box. Tell them come out of the box. Tell them come out of the box. We got to get out of the box. That's all you can't go here.
I have one other comment.
Yes.
In this report from Mac, I like this little statement. Whose statement is this about Clinton, a town that's on the move? That's yours? So I was noticing, like in St. Francisville, they have those, I guess you call them banners that hang on their light poles if you enter town, and there say, "We love it here." So if we're considering maybe adopting some sort of slogan like that, if one year we have extra funds, that we can maybe put banners in the town and then make some steps to make this a reality so that people see that Clint's trying to be a town on the move, I think that's a nice motto.
We'll see. We, uh, we ought to also manage from. We have some. We have the ones that says, "Welcome to the."
Yeah, yeah.
They will do that. They have to get on it. They'll personalize them.
We also have a town to, uh, buy home with Coca-Cola.
That's right.
I'm quite sure. You, you donate to the town here, too?
I wish we had more light bulbs down town, so we could have more Christmas decorations.
It's kind of sparse.
I know. If you did ride through Jackson, which I tend to look down on Jackson, but their little signs look nice, and their lights look nice, and we could look nicer.
Very true. The ministry matters. Uh, one thing I have is on the twenty-first, which is, uh, next week. It's on Toad Drive here. We have collected some monies from our vendors that Friday, this is the town plan with the police department. Our employees are gonna get their monies or buy bikes this Friday. I remember I said this Friday, and then, uh, we'll be going shopping to buy gifts. We have, uh, applications, but we only have four applications that's been filled out so far with the children. I don't know for the children or for the town plan, because we give back to our kids here in the town plan. Not that we're being selfish, but, uh, we try to take care of here at home first, and if there's something left over, you know, we give to other children. Now, that's outside of the city limits, but, uh.
When do you give it?
We're gonna do it on the twenty-first. That's gonna be that Thursday at ten o'clock. The only stipulation is that the kids live here, and you bring the children with you when we give them the gifts.
So when they apply, is it, you, anyone can apply, or is there, or there's some standards of?
Just, you, you, you know.
And when they come here, we have to, we look at.
Probably get it. Yeah, we look at it. And we take pictures because our vendors give us good money, and we like them to see what we're doing with their money. The parade was, was, was great. Uh, the reindeer race was totally hilarious. Um.
No, they would let us.
Say we was hosting it if we were there.
And we were, we were hosting it. Now, it, next year, we're trying to get the chamber commerce, or maybe if, when you call some member, can can host it and judge it, then we can participate.
Well, who told you you couldn't participate?
Well, what, what was going on, if, if, if I was pushing the mail, somebody was pushing the mail, pushing me, and then we won, you know, they was gonna say.
They told you about you.
Well, I mean, Jeff Fravos was. But, uh, I said Jeff Fravos was in, and he's.
Yeah.
See, well, he was, he was first place.
He was in, he, he was with.
He had real elaborate.
But I did tell him afterwards, and he say, ah, he said, we can do it right now. When I got down there, he said, nah, we'll do it next time.
Oh, man. You had some of your mail pushers coming out all in the, uh, all in, in.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Competition's competition, man.
All of them.
Well, at least the trouble is here right here. I don't know, Bobby, if I go up in there and hear, he right, Mr. Hicks. They wanna ask yourself, what you saying about the, uh, land that's right on.
I didn't know.
You know, I was, I was just telling, uh, uh, Mr. Kemp was talking about as far as the, uh, with Mr. Uh, Nether, Nether.
Nether.
With, uh, the Corps of Engineers and, you know, sending, we just gonna get together and, and form this when they want to.
They're working on, uh, what, after the first, getting a drum that has like seven mile range and fly it north of town and south,